Okay, we can call this meeting over. We're all here. Um. Agenda item number, oh, the welcome. Thank you. Agenda item number one is over. We're both committed.
I'll. Is it working? Yes, it's working. No?
No, it was, oh, there it is. The light's not working, but the mic is. Okay. Uh, I move to approve.
I'll second.
And it is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next item is current business building for library construction grant project by Robert. You know, my head.
Hello again.
Robert.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Um, we are really, really close to, um, uh, starting the process of construction. So I have brought with me today, Ed Vasquez. He is the, um, project manager and he's going to walk you through, uh, the project itself. And then I'm going to come back and have a conversation with you about, uh, relocation of our services.
Oh, a quick question. Um, there's the, wow.
Hi, Juan.
Hi, Juan, did you take this last month? Do you have one day for that?
Uh, and it's going to talk about that.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Um, so update on the library project. And I'm sorry I'm looking out, so I made notes to make sure I remembered everything else in that cover. So I don't mean to ignore anyone. Um, so as of December last year, uh, 12/16, the plans 100% submittal was submitted to the building department, uh, which triggered the review process, uh, which in reviewing it's going to be, so we understand we're at, um, engineering department, fire department, building department, um, environmental, so all the departments to the cities that have to review and approve the projects or say there are no comments. Um, we are in the review time period, uh, for 30 days until 1/17. However, I have direct access to the portal, which is something that I asked, uh, to make sure that I had it. We've already received, uh, first initial set of comments from the fire department, the building department, engineering and planning. So I believe I'm missing one department right now. Um, as soon as I'm getting these comments back, I am printing them, downloading them, sending them to our consultant for review and for corrections to start being made. So in our meeting yesterday, they had the comments since Monday. They're already working on the comments and the corrections that are needed for the plans.
Okay, looking at the, uh, the timeline from last month, I think you're telling us that, uh, what was going to be done one by 1/13 is going to be done by 1/17?
Correct.
Okay.
And there is an updated schedule that I prepared, so that one that you have right now is a little outdated and I can share that and send it, um, probably provide it to Reno or Robert and then we can send it out to everybody. So we're on the same page with that. Um, in our meeting that we had yesterday, the consultant is aware, has all the comments, says I get them, they're getting them right away, they're working on the revisions. I expect that by 1/17, where we have all final comments, they should be shortly after that ready to resubmit to the building department. Uh, most of the comments that were received, uh, were with the building department itself, items. I can also share that initial set of comments. It's a, it's a good list. Um, so there's seven pages of comments, which in looking at the project size, 100 sheets, there's about 50 comments. It's not a lot. Um, a lot of the comments were notes, missed notes, uh, missed callouts, um, items that, safety items you needed to address, some items with the planning department that I'm working on, on as a site, kind of addressing those issues with our director, um, that will probably not apply to us. Um, so those things are being handled. Again, as soon as I get something, I'm running with it and chasing it and trying to get those items resolved.
Um, so thus far, is there anything that's materially impactful to schedule or cost?
No, not that I see everything is kind of along the lines where everything that we've been talking about. I was going to share a little bit more there. Um, cost estimate was my next item to talk about. Um, this projected cost still is coming in at 8.7 million for the overall project. Um, I just want to remind everyone that that's kind of a engineer's estimate and depending on what comes in, it might be, most likely will be higher than that, um, once the numbers, actual numbers from the bidders come in. Those I can't give you of what they might be. I'm just pretty sure they will be higher than 8.7 million, so. Um, some other additional costs, I think that Reno's working on the F, F and E. Um, we're still looking at 250K, uh, stacks, um, 482K. The ADA improvements, um, speaking with our director, uh, Joseph Gullard from Public Works, um, we're looking at doing that project as a separate project, either through Public Works staff or sending that out to bid as a separate little project. Chances are that our Public Works staff can handle that project as far as the ADA access, sidewalk, parking stalls, striping, signage, anything that involves that front row parking there. Um, we still have pending items on the second floor, which are not included in here, uh, which those I think are yet to be resolved and we'll probably have a different meeting, correct? Uh, I think for our next meeting, um, but as a, the update, we're on track with the schedule. So with the schedule, we are looking to be complete with the project process March and be, and hoping to get this out to bid the beginning of March. So February, March, um, and I'm kind of giving myself a couple of weeks there to be able to get this out to bid. At the same time, um, so everyone's aware, I am working directly with the city attorney's office in reviewing all the documents, uh, which I've been preparing over the last few weeks. Uh, there's a set of documents that need to be reviewed by the city attorney's office before I put anything out to bid. So I'm consecutively doing that, so as soon as I get the approval, or when I know that we're close to approval is when I can kind of put this project out to bid. So we wouldn't want to do that before that approval is there. Um, as far as timeline goes, I believe that we've worked on, for April 16th would be the council meeting that we would be going to for award the project. So all these, all these items again are going to happen very quickly and by the April 16th, we should be ready to award.
Okay, I'm really, um, glad to hear that you're doing all this stuff consecutively and not, not waiting, you know, that this, this is, this is the way to do things as quickly as possible and we really appreciate that. Um, we've been told all along that soft costs were to be approximately 30%. Is that hard in, in, in fact, or, uh, obviously if soft costs are 30%, um, construction costs have to be 7 million?
I'm sorry, they have to be what?
That they can't exceed 7 million with a $10 million grant.
Correct. So we are still running a deficit on, based on the grant amount that was awarded and what we've already spent on consulting costs with design and with, uh, the additional construction slash project manager that we have on site. So that, that's always been a factor that, yes, we, the grant was initially for 10 million, but we've already spent, uh, 200,000 roughly on consulting fees for design. So there's, there is a running deficit on the project still.
Okay. Um, is there going to be, if there's no more surprises on, um, soft costs, is there going to be any chance that some of that money be available for construction?
Sure. That, that, of course, uh, anything that's not used, um, will, will be, remains in the pot and remains available for construction with contingency or whatever the case might be.
Okay. Okay, so then probably by early April, you're going to have all your numbers back from your bidders and the choices, uh, made? Is that?
Be, by the end of March, yes, March, April, yes, we should know what those exact numbers are going to be.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, then I guess we'll, that'll, that'll be the time to, uh, decide what we're going to do uh, if they're, if we're over budget, over the, the 10 mil on just the construction costs, let alone the, the finish work we were talking about paying for from friends and friends of the library and the trustees', uh, account.
Right, so as of right now, I think, uh, staff that I work with, Robert, uh, my director, Joseph Gullard and others, uh, other upper management staff are aware that there is a deficit, there is a running deficit. Those conversations are above me, so I can't speak to them, but we are aware and we have talked about that, so.
Okay. Um, I guess that's all the questions, sorry.
Um, Ed, when you were talking about the additional, um, costs, you said 250K, I think you said FEA. What does that mean?
Oh, F, F and E?
F, F and E.
The furniture, uh, furniture?
Oh, okay. Thank you, I'm not in this business, so I'm a little slow.
Basic furniture, yes. And that would be the furniture for the entire first floor.
Okay, first floor. Okay, anyone else have questions?
Um, I'm sorry, maybe you explain this, um, in a meeting where I wasn't present, but, um, can you explain what a running deficit is?
So we call it a running deficit because in, in, in our minds, looking at the projects, the way that the contractors have bid over the last year or the last couple of years, we think, you know, like some of these $500,000, they'll come in with $700,000, $800,000 and it kind of throws our numbers off. Um, obviously it's a little bit different because we budget for a certain amount with the CIP budget, right? But then we don't get those projects out to maybe two, three years down the line and then by that time it's escalated. So with this project, yeah, we got the grant, I think it's been close to two years maybe, or a year at least I was worried by, um, so in doing, in doing that work, by the time they come in with the, with their bids, I expect it to be higher than that. Um, sometimes we'll get a really outrageous bid that, you know, we're budgeting 10 million and they'll come in with 15, 17 million and we're like, where are you getting this number from? Sometimes they'll be reasonable and they'll still do their, you know, contractor upcharge and they'll come in reasonable. It might be 10.2, 11 million, 12 million. Um, in my mind, in our minds that we looked at, we're consulting, our construction manager, we're looking at that this might come in somewhere around 12.5 to 12.7 million, which is more realistic for the work that needs to be done. Um, but we never know, we might get lucky and it might come in relatively close to 10 million, so.
So at the time that it comes in at 12.5, does that mean that you guys then cut scope in order to get under the 10?
Um, uh, I don't know what management is going to want to do in that case. Um, it might be that they decide to fund it with another, um, funding source, which I, I don't know and, and those are conversations that we haven't had yet because everybody's still kind of, what's the actual number that we're looking at here?
And is there a negotiation period after you select your, um, preferred lender? Like where you can go back and say, oh, we're going to cut your, I mean, do they propose a fee basically? Like how do you, what kind of insight do you get into their cost?
So they can provide a detailed cost of what they submitted, but we can't negotiate that cost any further.
Oh.
So what's submitted is what we end up awarding, which that's why these, uh, projects are a little bit hard because sometimes we see things, uh, they're, they're over bidding on something, right? And they're like, instead of making 10% on something, they're making 30, 40% on something, which makes it really difficult to award. Now this is a grant, so we can not, not award a project and not move forward. So we are going to have to figure something out as far as what we do, which is why I'm also, um, when I say alternate bid items, um, I'm trying to find where I can save or where I can say, we're not going to do this portion of the project, but being that this is an infrastructure project, I can't eliminate like the ADA improvements, right, for restrooms. I can't eliminate the plumbing, I can't eliminate the electrical or pieces of it. It's kind of, you have to complete that entire portion of electrical or plumbing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, brought up another question or two. Uh, the possible ADA to, that could be done by Escondido Public Works itself. That was, before we talked about exterior, which is not allowed in the grant, exterior to the building. So are you talking about interior as well now?
No, this is just the exterior portion.
Okay, so there's no change in what?
No.
What Joe Gullard said?
We, no, we don't, we're not able to work on the building inside or do any major improvements like the ADA compliance as to be a contractor, so.
All right, so that's basically what was discussed, um, when Carol and I met with him and was that October, November, wherever it was? Yeah, okay. Well, having worked nothing but private projects all my life, I'm, I'm amazed that public entities aren't allowed to try to negotiate the price down. That's, that's, that's unheard of in the private sector.
Well, so it's. Right, it is very unfortunate. I, I believe the only thing we can negotiate is if we have change orders, right? Um, if they can provide, oh, here's a change order for something and we're like, no, we're not paying for that. And that's the only time that something has not been agreed to by contract yet and it hasn't been publicly bid either and it's part of the project, unforeseen change that we don't know about. It's the only time that we can negotiate something, when it's a change order.
Uh, most of the questions have been answered already, but can you just remind about how the bid process works again? And can we somehow make it more competitive so there are more bids?
So the bid process is going to, uh, let's take, let me back up. Once the plans are approved by the building department that they're ready to issue, meaning the permit can be obtained by a licensed contractor, is when we want to start the bid process. Not before then, only because if we're still making corrections and it changes the plans, then it changes what's out in the world kind of for contractors to review. So the last thing we want them is to miss something and then they bid on something different that wasn't approved. Um, the bid process works in a sense, once I get that notification that the plans are approved and permit ready to issue, it's going to sit in the building department. Um, I'm going to take the final plans and specs, attach them to all my documents, put them out into our biddirect.net, which is a, the bid site that we use right now, which kind of goes out globally, internet, kind of goes out to different, um, different companies, different contractors. There's an area where we pick what type of project, uh, project it is, what type of license it is. So they have a list of contractors that they generally send. For reference, I just sent one out for the Ranger Station Trailer Project. It automatically gave me 50 or 60 different companies and contractors that automatically get notified. Hey, there's a new project, go look at it, um, look at the documents and then people are aware. Um, there's also during that bid process, we publish two times in the newspaper, local newspapers and I think regional newspapers, um, that, hey, here's a project that's the city of Escondido for you guys to go up bid and we kind of give it a 30-day period or date for when that bid closes. You have to, this state to submit your bids and that's when we'll know what the numbers are.
Thank you, Ed, appreciate that.
You are.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Great. All right, um, let's talk relocation services. So the, uh, the goal is to ensure that we have as many services as possible uh, once we relocate to the new location. And so, uh, last time we spoke, uh, we said we were working on a couple of potential sites. And we have narrowed it down to two locations. Right now there is a storefront on Grand Avenue that we are currently looking at, that we are in the process of working with a, um, a building owner there. The issue is that that building needs to be brought up to proper building code. Earlier this week, we did have building inspectors go over. Their report is due to us by tomorrow. So, um, one of the gentlemen that works with them in our economic development department uh, was over there and was meeting with them at the same time they were doing their building inspection. And again, we should have that report as far as what needs to be upgraded for us to potentially be able to move into that space. So that is our primary location that we are currently looking at. We do also have a secondary location and, um, depending on the scope of the project that that primary location might have, because it may exceed our current timeline and that's what we're a little bit concerned about. So we are actually, I had a conversation with Reno just this morning that we are actually looking at leaning more towards our secondary location. The information that I received from the gentleman that, uh, was with the building inspectors indicated that the building was a little bit more challenging as far as what needs to be brought up to code than they were expecting initially. I won't know that for sure until we receive that report sometime tomorrow. The secondary location is here at the California Center for the Arts, um, so that is our secondary location. Um, that would be in the museum space, uh, is where we would be looking at going. I have a conversation tomorrow with their executive director to talk a little bit more about what that might look like. She has already had a conversation with her board of directors that have given her permission to be able to move forward to negotiate with us as the city to be able to potentially move into that space. That space will be available starting on March 31st. So we would have ample time for us to be able to move art collections into that particular space and be able to be ready and open to the public, um, by the end of the month, likely, starting in May.
Um, Robert, is, uh, are the square footage for both these locations comparable?
That is a fantastic question and the answer is no. So the space on Grand is a larger space, so that is why it is our primary that we would prefer to be able to move into. Um, I cannot, I'm sorry, I can't think right offhand what the space for the CCAE is.
I, I also don't know the exact, I can tell you that it was bigger than the combined three original spaces we were looking at. So it is an improvement over the initial plan of having three spaces. Um, but I have not done the square footage calculations exactly for the museum space at this moment.
But, but the museum space wouldn't need any, uh, ADA or anything?
No, not at all. It is, it's, it's ready, move-in ready, right? So that's the nice thing about it, move-in ready.
Is, is the museum space standalone, so we wouldn't require any CCA staff to help us for?
I believe that's accurate.
Okay.
So one of the other things that Reno and I spoke about earlier today and this is a conversation I'm going to have with the executive director tomorrow, is that we are going to talk about a walkthrough. So that would be, uh, myself potentially, our building maintenance staff, as well as, uh, members of Reno's team to be able to find out how we would be able to potentially use the space. Reno and I also had a conversation about the utilization of the Mathis Center. As of right now, um, the Mathis Center is also used for recreation programming. Uh, my team has already, starting in the spring season, has adjusted those. So we've moved those, uh, classes and activities out of the Mathis Center. So that is now also an available space to be able to use. Um, I had also a conversation earlier this week with our information systems, uh, network manager to talk about these two spaces specifically, the storefront on Grand and the California Center for the Arts. And the great thing is that they were very excited. They didn't have to manage two or multiple, all these multiple locations, um, that this would work for them. So very excited that we will be able to provide a seamless transition. Um, just kind of depends on the nuanced needs of each specific location. So we're very happy about that as well. And then starting next week, I'm meeting with the communications team and we are going to be talking about a, uh, communication plan to the public about the transition of these services. Because by time, about this time next week, we should have a really great idea of where we're going to be leaning and the specific location that we are actually going to handle. And we'll make sure that I communicate that to Reno, so he can share that information with you prior to the next meeting. So that's the information I have at this point. Um, I'm available to take any questions if you have some, I'm sure there's a variety and I will do my best to answer them. I do have some of those answers, but I may not have all of those answers.
Can you remind me if the, if there's going to be a rent charge from the California Center for the Arts that will add to the deficit or did we put in a buffer for that?
We did not because the relocation of services are not covered under the grant. There would be a, um, a rental, um, cost that would be associated with us being in that particular space. That's one of those things I'm going to be talking to the executive director about tomorrow. What does that look like? Um, the transition of, uh, the library services and the relocation that includes the transition and moving of the stacks, materials, your collections, uh, the desks, the staff, all that stuff, as well as the rental space as well. Um, that is, the city manager's office is well aware of that. That has also now also already been socialized with the city council as well, so they are familiar with that, that there is going to be a charge that the city is going to incur and they are looking at how do they and where do those funds come from? As Ed mentioned earlier, sometimes those conversations are a little bit over our pay grade, so that is, uh, that's where we're at right now.
So similar to the city footing the cost for moving purposes and rent, is that the same if, with, with the, the location on Grand, um, any building upgrades? Would that also follow the city or is that still captured under that?
So that is part of a negotiation that we would have with the building owner. Um, there is a possibility that the city would issue a, uh, grant to be able to upgrade, uh, their, their building itself because once the library moves out of that space, that becomes a very nice, usable, rentable, commercial, uh, retail space for people to be able to move into. So it's a kind of a win-win economically for the building owner and for us. So, uh, but again, the question mostly for that, uh, space on Grand Avenue is really going to come down to the timeframe that things can be, um, accomplished prior to our need to actually move out. And right now we're looking at basically the week of March 31st, which is essentially the month of April. And that's a, that's a tough road to do any type of construction work in two and a half months. I don't know if anybody's had, um, renovations under their house. I certainly have. It was a little bit more than two and a half months, so.
Just a quick question about the, the building on Grand. Um, is it just because the city is, um, trying to move in there that they'd have to do the building upgrades or is this something they'd have to do regardless of who the patron is, who goes in?
It, it is required regardless of who actually moves into that space.
Interesting, thank you.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
If something were to happen with the California Center of Arts future, and I know that's been debated in the news, how would that affect the library's status if it was selected as the secondary location?
That is a wonderful, amazing, excellent question. The same question that I had for our economic development team. The answer is that is a negotiation piece as a part of any type of management transition that would potentially occur.
And then for the, this is a separate question for the Mathis Center. Um, you mentioned the recreational services moving to somewhere else. Where would those be moving and then what about the vendors of the businesses that operate out of Mathis Center? Is there storage for them in new places or?
So we don't allow storage of any of our contract instructors at our facilities in general, uh, with a couple of exceptions and one of those, um, exceptions does actually happen to be there. It's the Taiwondo class. That particular class has been, um, will be moved over to the Park Avenue Community Center, which is, you know, three, four blocks away. It's not very far away, so they're, they're not moving very far. So, um, we are making some minor adjustments. They're just simply moving to new locations for facilities that we already utilize. And for us, it's a win-win. We are looking at putting more evening and weekend activities at that particular location, the Park Avenue Community Center. Um, so once they get in there, they may find that they really like the space and so, um, they may opt to stay there after they've been there for about a year. And that allows us to be able to open up, um, at the center for other opportunities as well.
Then you're still uncertain though if those exceptions will carry you over to the new location?
No, 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 it's, it's, those are our facilities, so that, that is, that's not an issue. Yeah. We have, we have storage space for that particular instructor to keep some of their supplies there. Thank you for your concern. Thank you for your concern. Anything else?
Okay, last month, we talked about having another workshop meeting, do you think we're going to have it, and we talked about having it the first week of February?
Correct. So, in checking Ed and my schedule and having consulted with Reno, we would be open and available on February 7th, which is Friday. So, we are more than happy to step in and, and work with you and the other supporters of the library during that time.
Okay, and we'll have enough information on the amounts of things that we're going to talk about as far as like the furniture costs that we want to propose to cover? Yeah, we will, okay, great. So, we will schedule a library renovation workshop meeting for Friday, February 7th, at 11:30 for the community to attend. And it will be in the tarantine room at the library. And I will email the Friends of the Library Board and the Escondido Library Foundation with this information.
Great.
Thank you. I think we have all the information, thank you, Robert and Ed. Okay. Okay, good. We'll move on to number, item number three, Hoopla status report and board discussion.
All right. Make sure our headphones are turned, it's really loud. All right, so, hopefully you've had a chance to read the staff report I sent out to the board. Essentially, this is following up from several more meetings in the past where we were making adjustments to the Hoopla access. Remember a few months back, I came and requested input and vote to reduce the number of monthly downloads and twist to a monthly budget cap for Hoopla to try to make sure that we had more access to residents of Escondido for the service. We lowered the downloads from five to three, and we have instituted a monthly cap, which is around $1,300 per month, which is then divided by days, so usually it's 1,300 divided by 30, give or take, which doesn't allow for a lot of downloads per day, it's just the reality. Today, I'm following up, just to let you know that, of course, we have heard from the public that there have been a number of challenges in accessing Hoopla. Everything from the expected, which is production, the overall downloads, just as a result of both caps, and also, something we anticipated but we're hoping wouldn't be as bad, which is the time of the download and that app, most people after midnight go in to download, and within the hour, all the downloads for the day are done. So, between the hours of 12 and 1 a.m. is when all the downloads for the day at Hoopla are made. Last time we met, the board directed me to kind of find more information about who is being impacted and what further measures we could take. So I did go and asked for data from Hoopla, and based upon the last three months of data, so all the presentation we're getting today is based on data starting from around the time we implemented the change through December, so we're looking through September and December, the last three months. So, this is at a glance, this is data we can find in Hoopla, this is from 2024, 1224, the dataset that we're using. You can see here that around 500 patrons that are unique are used the service during that time. You can see the average cost per circulation, around $2.27. And so, if the budget per month is 1,300, you do the math, divide 1,300 by 2.27, and you can figure out how much total downloads you can maximum have on average for a month. You can see also here that the average circulation is around 3.4. Our cap right now is three, so essentially people are getting either a little bit more of a disemple, like check out more than once, or because of the way the data work, the data. And again, this is for three months, so again, somebody might get a book one month, two books the next month, et cetera. So, based on this data, what our goal was to figure out who was actually using Hoopla and who would be affected in further reductions. This data based on Hoopla.
Yes, one quick question, what does, what's a unique patron versus a new patron?
Unique patrons is a count of, say, a unique identifier, in this case being the library card or online card. So, rather than the same patron using multiple downloads, for every unique person that logs into Hoopla and downloads or does something, that's what that's counting. New patrons are just people that are signing up, they might not have actually checked out anything, but that's what that counts.
Check.
New registrants, essentially.
Reno, can I just ask for your clarification on, an online card?
Yep.
And then, a physical card?
Yep.
Is it possible, because I think this has happened to me, that I have an online card and a physical card, and it counts me as two?
It is possible.
Okay.
We, our circulation and customer service team does try to compare and make sure that we don't get duplicates, but usually what happens is we run reports and we have to check to make sure that it's clear. But, there is essentially nothing stopping somebody from getting a phony online card and then coming in and getting a real card. Usually it's the other way around, they have a new card and they get another phony online card. Most people don't go through the trouble of doing that, but it is possible.
Okay.
Usually it's the reverse. We offer the online card as a way of lowering the entry to get the card into engaged and working with the library, using the online resources, and then we personally kind of manage to convert that card into a physical card. That's the process as intended, but as we mentioned, it's not always exactly that way. Either varies or otherwise, it just sometimes happens, some people forget that they have a card. This is the Hoopla users just in their totality, the breakdown. So you can see here, the majority are based in Escondido, followed by San Diego, and that San Diego, we'll see a little bit later on, when we actually compare the data between Hoopla and the library's catalog, the ILS, the system that we use to manage our patrons, is a little bit different, but it's very much close. I just wanted to show you what Hoopla, how they recognize it, and I think they use IP address to kind of figure this out, because it was a little bit different than the data I had. But, let's go to the data. So, using the three months from Hoopla, we compared with our ILS records, so the records in the library's catalog of patrons. One of the questions I believe John asked was, how do we make sure that, you know, ZIP codes that are part of Escondido but might have been unincorporated that are near Escondido, how many are actually serving, and who are they? So, I'm going to go back and forth, I picked the three clo, or the closest ZIP codes to the area around Escondido, you can see here, so there's six that are found on this page. This is the breakdown of users, again, over the past three months. So, in total, this makes around 20% of users reside in one of the six ZIP codes, so the majority, but just barely. The other 48% reside outside of the six neighboring ZIP codes. So, we're more confident that they are not Escondido residents. We move on to the next page. This is where we're going to start seeing the differences between the physical and online card. This data reflects physical cards, users that use that physical card number in Hoopla. So you can see here, correlation is very strong, if you live in the neighboring ZIP codes, you have a physical card. Majority of them, you can see here, the top six were all Escondido physical card holders, and then the online, you can see the breakdown of those without a, if you have a physical card and you don't live in Escondido, it's much less. So there's a very strong correlation with having a physical card, using that card, you live in Escondido, like it's, it's clear. You got a card, you can come into the library and, it's easy. Now, for the online only card, we almost see the reverse. Online ZIP code users that have an online card is 30% versus 71% that live outside of the six Escondido identified ZIP codes. So that means, based on the data for the past three months, the majority of users that are using that online card are not identified as Escondido residents, so it's around 71%. With the majority being, you know, San Diego, Poway, and some of the neighboring San Diego neighborhoods like Renato or Miramessa. This also aligns closely with when I went in to see who was being blocked. Each day I can look at the recorder at that minute, if they, whoever wants to try to check out who's being blocked, the top 10 people that were blocked were all outside Escondido, and were all online only cards. So, the data is indicating that users that have that PAC reg, the online only card, the majority are outside of Escondido. This just does that breakdown a little bit further. And this is how we can see, like, all users, we can identify the users both by city, and then again, self-identified. Majority is Escondido, and you can see the breakdown below. For PAC reg, which is our online card, San Diego leads, and then Escondido. And then for the physical, as I mentioned, an overwhelming majority that have a physical card are Escondido identified residents. So what can we use in Hoopla to limit access? We have a number of different tools we can use. I've listed out the top three that I would recommend. So, barcode prefix. So, this is the identifier at the very beginning of the library cards, and they're all the same, all this prefix. For Escondido library cards, it's 21724. And PAC reg, those are the online cards, so that's their prefix. If we were to say exclude everybody that has that PAC reg, we would block around 228, and it would include around 70 users that we have identified as Escondido residents. Reversely, if we say we said we will allow only the 21724, then 232 would be blocked and 73, so it's very similar. We also have an option of limiting by the home library. Those, when you're signing up for your card, you say where you live, online, work with desk, register, and capture it based on your ID. If we say only Escondido, then 233 would be allowed. In this case, it would only be people that are self-identified or are physical card holders, and 232 would be blocked. And the last one is, if we wanted to exclude by patron type, and this is getting a little technical, don't ask me why we do both, I don't have an answer to that, but if we exclude by PAC reg versus the patron code, that's similar to excluding by the prefix. There's just some slight variance because of legacy PAC reg cards and some weird ways of whether they use to transition from free LMS to how we standardize how we use PAC reg. But functionally, that also has the same effect as excluding the PAC reg prefix.
Hey, I have, I have a question. Only prefix 21724, does that identify to, or correlate to specific ZIP codes?
It does not, it only correlates specifically to having a physical card obtained at the Escondido public library. It is separate from ZIP codes. Hoopla cannot block based on ZIP codes. We have to either block based on home library, which is fairly close, or getting that physical card as a 21724 prefix. Now, the questions for you would be, who should have access to Hoopla? We can have it set up where it's Escondido resident, regardless of whether they're physical or digital. This would allow for some people to kind of, I don't want to say fraud, but they can select Escondido as their home library when they're signing up, so they would have to know that before they're around. Or, we can also limit by save if they have a physical card. So if they come to the library and get the real card, or what we say verified card, that would give them options as well. The ideal solution would be if we could have a way of verifying the digital cards and converting them into a physical remotely, but at this point, we don't have the technology or the processes to get there, but it is a goal. That would be the ideal, where regardless of where you are, when you verify that you live in Escondido, and send you, say, a digital verified 21734 card number.
So, could all the online card holders be contacted by email and, and tell them they have to convert within the next, next number of months to a hard card, Escondido? Is that, is that a possibility?
Yes, we, we have the possibility of, when you sign up for Hoopla, you can include an email address, same with, we can match the PAC reg number with our catalog record, and they should have either an email address or a phone number, even though email is preferred. So we can certainly contact them directly via email, and we'd also, depending on whatever we choose today, we'd want to include that notification both on our website and our social media to let people be aware of the change. But, there is methods we have to directly contact and let them know you have such an amount of time to come in, or to verify, and to make sure that they understand that if you're not an Escondido resident that the board chooses, that they will be cut off from Hoopla.
And, and you could ask for like a copy of a driver's license or an utility bill or whatever?
Right, that's what we do right now to verify residents.
Okay, thank you.
Reno, I think you've answered this for me before, but I don't remember. For a physical card, if you don't visit within, I think, two years, it gets deactivated, prompts you to go and
Correct.
update your information. Is that the same thing for the physical cards for Hoopla users?
For the digital?
Yes. No, for, if they have a physical card and use Hoopla only, but they haven't visited the library in two years, does that count as keeping them active, or?
We can certainly renew it. One thing I've learned in contacting Hoopla is that since it was set up, it was a couple of years ago, there was essentially no limiters put in place.
Okay.
So right now, there is no limiter for whether your card is outstanding, whether it expires. All the system is doing is checking that it's a, basically that it's either a PAC reg with a number, or it's our library card number prefix, and that's all it's really checking.
Okay. Can they put in a fictitious number?
They, it would, yes, but it would have to be something that exists already in the catalog. So like, you can PAC reg with the people alive, and if somebody happens to be PAC reg with the people alive, and they know their PIN?
Oh.
Then, yes, but at that point, the PIN addition is needed. But technically, yes, but it would be a little harder.
Okay, so even if we did change to card only, it doesn't necessarily mean that there are active users at the library?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are, are folks who are experiencing homelessness able to get a physical card?
Yes. Yes, we have, or rent, so if they can't present, say, like, obviously they might not have the utility bill or something, so, some might have a phone bill, or some might have a temporary residence, we have flexibility, and our staff are well aware of that. Not everybody has a home or what have you.
So, I'm trying to figure out my thoughts on the situation. I had come across another library, well, there's several actually, I saw a couple of notices on the websites, of having to put a cap or taking other measures. And I reached out to one in particular, just to kind of see what efforts they were doing, what their future was. And so they shared that, you know, they, they have kind of taken what we are, we did, they tried one thing and seen that it's, you know, some patrons are not satisfied, and the costs are still high. So they started by bringing costs down, particularly in audiobooks and ebooks, then they put a cap, which they had a similar situation where early in the morning it was being exceeded. And so, now they, I think they put the audiobooks to the lowest setting, which is, it's getting closer to the evening where that cap is being reached, and they have also gone to eliminate it to their And they have also gone to eliminate it to their library patrons, exclude, including those online cards, because other libraries do also offer it to anybody in the state. So that's kind of what a few, a couple libraries I saw were doing, was just limiting it to
So whenever I think we're talking about like identifying folks who, you know, live outside of Escondido or even who live inside of Escondido and telling them that they need to come in and get a physical card, I think that the idea or concept of privacy comes into play. What is the, like, what is the communications around that, like, and how do we plan to communicate to our, the folks who are using this that like, we don't know who you are specifically, we don't track you, we don't track your, what you check out, right? What are your plans there?
We have, well, the state of California has very strict law for protecting patron records. It is pending an update on our policy side to bring it up to match the state's updated law, and that'll be up for discussion probably next time. I put it off the table because we have a pretty late tonight, but essentially, Hoopla records and all other records are considered confidential. Staff cannot share that, they can only share it with the cardholder or member in that scenario. Over the phone, we have to have the library card number, and we have to confirm identifying information and really discourage, we don't say like what you have checked out, but we can confirm whether you have the hold or, it's very general what is released. And the reality is that we don't share it to anybody other than the cardholder themselves. With Hoopla and some of the outside services, they are arranged certain license agreements, just like when you say yes to the Apple agreement, so they might have a little bit more in the way of tracking what you, you know, read or what have you, whether they're using it for their own purposes. That information's not shared with us, only in the aggregate is what we saw in a statistical review, so I know how many people checked out, but I can't know what individual people checked out in that way. And I'm well aware that asking people to come to the library to get a physical card is a barrier and is a challenge for some people, and that's why it's not an easy ask for me to do and why I'm also looking at alternatives for being able to verify remotely. The main thing is that we want to make sure that we can see the person and confirm that they are who they say are in the ID. That's the main limiting factor. We have to see a proof of identification and proof of residence. That's part of our policies as directed by the board and standard practice in all libraries in California.
Okay, thanks. And then just a confirmation that the folks with the virtual cards are still able to use our other platforms to download.
Yeah, they'd still be able to use, say, Libby and Overdrive, mostly because the costs there are much more reasonable, and we also have cost sharing agreements in support from the Sarah Cooperative for Florida. So Overdrive is managed through them, and we buy extra things that are exclusive to our users, others are shared collection. And other users might be, still can use like the databases that we have on the website, so that access is still okay. It's really specifically for Hoopla because it is a per, per, per download service, and so the goal with asking for your direction here would be to ensure that if we wanted to be that only Escondido residents are the ones being prioritized, that the method of doing that is what we're presenting here, which is either choosing the home library as Escondido, or having it be a physical card, or both would be the one where we would essentially restrict you, only verify people that have an Escondido card and residence.
Is it possible for someone to sign up for two online only cards if it's just like email-based?
Technically, yes. I'd have to double-check to make sure that the staff are checking and clearing out those online cards. The trick is, usually we use that email address as the unique identifier, when it comes to online, because names, we also check the names, but you know, you have a John Smith, you have lots of those, or you know, you have Hoopla here in the area. And so we also try to use the email address, but of course, email addresses are free and you can swap them out. Now, it hasn't been a priority in the past because we didn't deem it to be one, we weren't so restricted budgetarily, or we were just kind of like free flow, and a lot of libraries just, that was the approach, you know? The goal is to get people engaged with these online services, especially when they were newer, and so they wanted to just look, anybody that wants it can go get it, it's an easy way to engage the library. Now we're coming to the realization that yes, it is good to engage in that way, but also the costs of that service model are what they are now, and as we saw with the data, the majority of the users with that online card are not residents, whereas we know if you have a physical card, it's very likely that you are a resident, and you know, when we're at eighty percent of the users, that's a better figure than say the reverse where it's seventy percent of outside users versus that thirteen.
Rena, thank you for providing the options for us. Do you have a preferred way that you would approach this?
I would say the ideal way would be what I call the verified library card, which is currently the easiest one would be the physical card, and then moving towards getting a way of verifying remotely. The easier way if we want to prioritize access from remote would be the opposite, which would be continue to allow the online cards, but only those online cards that choose Escondido as their city. So there's pros and cons to both. What prioritizes that digital access, and there are some workarounds we discussed where you can game the system. The more secure and more certain venue of that we know people will have as Escondido residents, ideas that we go with only that physical card. But that does leave out those that can't make it to the library at this point.
So we could have your first, who should access the first option, let's call it. Escondido residents regardless of physical versus digital card, and that would mean that the online cards that say Escondido would be okay and all the physical cards would be okay?
Yes.
That sounds pretty good. And then if somebody worked in Escondido, they could be, you could email everybody that has an online card and say, if you work in Escondido, contact us and we'll go over your situation.
Right.
And I was surprised to see oh-seven-eight and oh-six-nine ZIP codes, because I thought those were exclusively San Marcos, not Escondido and San Marcos.
I was a little bit inclusive, or just probably then is needed, because I couldn't quite tell whether there's a little zip that's near Escondido, and so yes, most likely most of those are San Marcos. But in the fairness of just choosing the closest ZIP codes, that's how I interpreted the data there.
Okay, well, it's not material, it's like six percent of the total.
Correct.
But we could exclude those as well.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just trying to think of this in my brain, but is it one way to look at it, like priority tier format?
Yeah.
Like priority one is Escondido residents, online, physical cards. Priority two is the other groups?
Right, we're basically just filtering out different segments or including, it's kind of like at war terms, where we're either including or excluding, depending on what we want to choose.
Is there a way technically to just allow like maybe priority two, like access later in the day, even though we know the numbers don't allow that?
Unfortunately, no. It's a on or off type of situation.
I have a clarifying question on the home library criteria, so, and maybe it's two separate things. So for the, if they have an online only card, is the inclusion or exclusion criteria what they self-report when they apply for the online card, or is it on Hoopla when they select Escondido as their library?
It's, it's based on the registry. When you are registering for an online card, it'll ask you what your home, or basically ask if it's your ZIP code or against the city. We could pull it up, but it's based on that, and so they get to put in, based on that input, choose whether it's Escondido, San Marcos, San Diego, et cetera.
You said that they put their home address?
They, I haven't seen, it's been a while.
Because if we're going to be putting notices on our website that it's only for Escondido, I would be inclined to put, I'm from Escondido. It's just identification.
And that is a workaround people would be able to do.
Because I imagine that those that are using Hoopla from other areas may be because their libraries are also maxed out, right?
Yes, there are people, there are people that are what we call power users, and they go around the country just getting and collecting online only cards.
I did see on the website, there is a, I don't know if it's a disclaimer or a line that says Escondido is not part of San Diego Public Library or San Diego County Library, so there is that language on the site, but I think that relates to something else, but I have seen that.
So if you saw here, I put in the San Marcos address or ZIP code, and you get a drop-down based on that ZIP code, so these would be the, most people would choose Escondido, Escondido. And again, they could game in and say, yeah, I'm from Escondido, they could continue. We would be able to run reports, but again, if they're putting a fake Escondido address here, there's no way for us to verify, that's why we ask people to come in to get a physical card and have to be verified. And that's why you can't check out physical books until you get a verified card. So yes, people could game in the system if we do that. The only way they can't is if we require them to come in and get that physical card.
Well, I think I'm leaning more towards requiring those who use Hoopla to come in and get a physical card, because at least that's like a barrier of entry is having to come in in person. They could still get a physical card without being verified, but they would be verified?
No, all physical cards are verified.
Okay, okay. I mean, I think we need to want restrict access, right, to Escondido residents, but then I think that we should probably just go like all the way, because we might be having this discussion in another month or two.
Yeah, I agree. And it's not like we're limiting people that don't have the ability to come in the library because they can use the other online services.
My concern would be what you mentioned before about the barrier of access, maybe someone that can't actually physically make it to the library to get a physical card that lives in Escondido.
Right, and I think a priority of mine for staff would be finding a way to, if not formally, until we have a policy in place, informally figure out a way of verifying that, either have them zoom us in or Skype or something like that. But that's going to take a little bit of investigating, and the first step would be whatever we decide today, and then we can go forth with those exceptional pieces.
So if we limited it to physical cards, Escondido only, we could put an email out that says if you're an Escondido resident and unable to come in and get a physical card, please call or email us at this address and we'll handle it.
Exactly.
Sounds good to me.
My only thing, sorry, so my only thing with requiring them to come in to get verified is we would have to put some thought in the timeline of that, because I can see patrons getting frustrated, especially with the construction, right, of like you have to come in, and then they show up, the library is closed, and we've moved temporarily, right?
Yeah.
So I think it's, I think we have to kind of figure out what that timeline looks like, because I can see that being additional frustration to our patrons.
And one point I would remind everybody is that the majority of people that were using that online card were not identified as Escondido residents. So the number of people that I anticipate will be directly immediately impacted is around, it's less than a hundred. And so those are the people we'd be targeting for that, you know, contacting, making sure are you able to come in? If not, how many? And that number of people is something that our staff should be able to accommodate, because we, we create on average six hundred new library cards at the library every month. So well within our capability of managing.
Just for sake of time, like what do we see as like next steps?
Oh, yeah.
Next step is I contact Hoopla to tell them which direction we're going, so they can start kind of set and set a date for when the filter turns on, and leading up to that, we can do it within a month, we can do it within two months, whatever we decide, a month. Again, it's a hundred people, whether we want to give it a two month or a month.
We should do it before May first.
Hmm?
Yes.
What?
May first should be the deadline, when we're going to close.
Well, I would vote to make it sooner, because we're now ticking off a lot of Escondido residents that can't use Hoopla because people out in Escondido are sucking up all the money.
Okay. You want to give them till?
Give them a month.
I was going to say April first.
Three months. Sounds like we should negotiate for sixty days, two months?
Two months sounds great.
Okay, there you go. Does that sound reasonable, Rena?
We can make two months work in. So it would be starting from?
January first.
So basically, March, like March first.
Sure. That's good.
Also, Rena, will any, will this affect any policies?
No.
Okay.
It's really just deciding, basically, we're holding Hoopla to the same standards as physical checkouts, is essentially what we're doing.
Okay, because of the cost associated.
Correct.
I don't think we need to vote for this.
Say what?
Yeah, let's vote it.
I would make the motion to, like, ask the folks who are, say, to get the physical cards.
Okay.
So we're going to physical cards only as of March first, and if you want, okay, so anybody with an online card, let's say they can't come in and get a physical card, can you somehow?
Call and, call the library.
Yeah, and work out where their online card would work on Hoopla?
Yeah, we would transition them to what we have called a verified or a dummy physical card.
Okay. All right, I'm happy with that.
So I'll make the motion to restrict Hoopla access to only physical cards, with that being implemented by March first. Okay, that's my motion. Second.
Approved five zero. Okay, thank you, Rena. Very informative and helped us make decisions. And we'll move on to item number four, collection budget.
Right. This one did my, Jean.
Open or?
It's the end. Yeah. Yeah, you should.
Okay, first we'll cover the background, going back to when this started in two thousand seventeen. A brief, very brief analysis of the current situation and some potential solutions. In two thousand seventeen, the city and LSNS entered into a contract for LS to, LSNS to operate the Escondido Public Library, and in that contract, a collection budget was set at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. The contract stipulates a three percent increase for LSNS's operating budget each year, which covers the employee costs and all the other services associated with running the library. It did not cover any type of increase or tied to any indice, anything for the collection budget. It has remained at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're into the eighth year of the agreement at two hundred and fifty- Uh, it did not cover any type of, uh, increase or tied to any indice, anything for the collection budget. It has remained at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're into the eighth year of the agreement at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I, I was just playing with numbers and if we'd put a two and a half percent annual increase in the collection budget in two thousand seventeen, uh, we would now be looking at a budget of two hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars and change. Uh, if we'd done three percent like the contract, we would now have a collection budget of three hundred and nine thousand dollars. Okay, next page. Pardon? Co, uh, compounded, yes. Yeah, whatever, the two and a half percent was added to the base for, and then the two and a half percent onto that, two and a half plus bizet's next year, yeah, compounded, just like the base. Okay, um, as you know, we're now experiencing difficulty paying for routine monthly collection expenses. I think Hoopla is just the first, uh, it's the, uh, the, the canary in the, in the coal mine here. Uh, and the recent year's inflation ha, has, uh, again with Hoopla, has rededucted, resulted in unacceptable reduced patron services. And this is just gonna continue, uh, because we're getting further and further behind. I've got two, um, uh, what do you call them, spreadsheets. One of which I got from LSNS from Jennifer Gilztrout, two thousand and eighteen, I think, that I have scrolled all over, and, uh, and one that Reno generated last week. So one from two thousand seventeen identified, uh, a lot of libraries with, uh, in cities that had roughly the same population as ours. Uh, Reno's basic, it covered, uh, basically about thirty libraries. Reno's, uh, spreadsheet covers sixty-four, uh, and on both of them, it's libraries all over the country. Uh, lots in California. Uh, let's see, one, two, four, six, eight, ten. Thirteen of the sixty-four are in California. And I, I think in the other, uh, one, it was, uh, pretty close to that. There's like eight or nine in California, one in Texas, et cetera. I remember going over the two thousand eighteen with, um, Joanna and Dara. And, uh, everyone agreed that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, collection budget was pretty much in line with other libraries of our size and we, we were reasonably happy, you know, satisfied with, uh, that, that number. But looking at the current graph, the, I mean, the current, uh, situation where we're looking at, um, the cost or the collection budget per capita of, uh, in other words, our collection budget for a hundred and fifty thousand people, uh, is a dollar and sixty-five cents each. Uh, that's per year. Uh, the sixty-four library, uh, average, uh, for their collection budgets, that's all sixty-four of the libraries on this list, is two dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, which shows us being quite a bit below, uh, where everybody else is. Local libraries in North County, um, the one that I know of is right around two dollars. And, uh, there are, uh, if, if we go to Carlsbad, I'm sure it's mucho. I, I, I forget, what was, Carlsbad's like six or seven dollars?
Carlsbad is in the six and seven dollars.
Yeah, so that's, uh, yeah, there's, there, hey, it's big, it's a big money place. You know, uh, somebody donated, uh, their house as a branch. Uh, yeah, it's, uh, there's, there's a lot of money there. So we can't, we, we can't look at that. Uh, in Carlsbad, I don't even think they're in here.
They might not have been because they have, they believe themselves to have three branches and we were looking at like for likes.
We were like, like for likes, so we were looking at one branch or less. Uh, so they, they didn't even come, come up in our, uh, in our, in our survey. So, uh, at, at a dollar sixty-five, no wonder we're having trouble. Okay, next page. Uh, potential solutions. Um, we are under budget just by looking at two and a half percent a year by four grand a month. Uh, I'm rounding this off. Uh, and what I'm suggesting is we take a look at doing that and that we look at having, uh, a collection budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, fiscal year established at three hundred, which would give us up to two bucks, or three fifty, which would give us, give us up to two point four. And, uh, that would be, um, maybe, uh, a little bit on the high side, but not much, uh, from what, uh, other similar libraries are at. And, and you can't do apples to apples with libraries because some of them, their collection budgets are augmented by personal donations from rich patrons and some aren't. So, uh, and also so that we don't go through this silly, this silly thing, uh, every year because this is, uh, established by the, the end of this fiscal year, the use of an index or set an annual increase that will happen to the budget automatically each year, just like there is in the LSNS contract. So these are potential solutions. There could be others. But, um, based upon what we're seeing, um, you know, four thousand dollars a month, uh, starting as soon as we can get approval would be a good start and then we can, we can look at what, what the collection budget should be for the following fiscal year. Uh, and, and, and a good range of numbers is between three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand.
I have a question. Since we've never increased the collection budget.
Never.
Anyone on this board or Reno, how do we make that happen? Even if we voted, what are the?
We would recommend to city that we want the budget increased. It's their contract with LSNS, the other one's spending the money.
Yeah, we have to amend the contract, right, and then find the money somewhere in the general fund.
Robert?
Limited at this point until the, the.
Well, we're, we're talking four thousand dollars a month.
Okay, the library's in the general fund. Uh, so the, right now, uh, you, you, I'm sorry, LSNS is currently under, uh, contract until the end of twenty twenty-six. So we are locked in with that particular rate unless we were to reopen that and have that negotiation in conversation.
Yeah, I don't think they, they complain.
There is no appetite on the side of the city, uh, management team to do that. In addition to that, um, the monies that are guaranteed to LSNS as a part of that contract is not currently in the general fund, as you mentioned. Uh, that is actually, um, coming out of our funding. It is the last little bit of our funding, but it's not currently in the general fund.
Well, there, there is a way to give the library four thousand dollars a month if the city wanted to.
I mean, it, there's always a way.
The prioritization.
Right, but.
On the list.
I, I can't, I can't speak for what the city manager's office would be interested in doing. I can't speak for what the city council is interested in doing. The city council will be meeting on January twenty-ninth as a part of a workshop to determine, uh, priorities and essential services. So after that, uh, workshop would be, um, when, uh, uh, the different areas of funding, um, would, uh, come up essentially.
Okay, so is the workshop a closed workshop with council or what, what, what's going on?
I, I, I can't speak to that because it's relatively new to me. I mean, Serena.
The workshop is open, so the twenty-ninth is the meeting scheduled. I wanna say it's starting at four. But no, it's regular, open to the public. And then on the twelfth, I wanna say there's a council meeting workshop. They're all open.
So I guess like my, my thought, thank you for putting this together, John. I think it's something we've talked about over the last couple of years. Um, my thoughts though, right, are kind of like to just challenge the assumptions we made a little bit, saying that we're not able to meet, you know, our commitments. And I think what we aren't able to meet is the current demand, which we've seen doesn't come specifically from Escanito residents. So that doesn't give me, like, the whole Hoopla thing will hopefully mean we reduce Escanito residents, we can fulfill the demand there. I definitely think that in the, the next iteration of this contract, we should absolutely built, built in that adjustment. But I don't think that it's prudent to ask the cu, the council to pay four thousand dollars per month, thirty-six thousand dollars a year, um, over the next year and a half when we know that they don't have the funding to cover their current shortfall.
Uh, I would differ with you on they don't have the money. They'll have the money.
In twenty twenty-six.
No, they'll, uh, they'll, they'll actually see the first monies later this year.
Later this year or so.
I'm trying to remember the exact date that they've come up with now, not the exact date, but the month. I think it's, uh, like May or June.
So, yeah, so what we've been told is we'll start actually, uh, realizing monies as early as July first. Uh, the, um, tax will go into effect on April first. So April falls.
Real?
This is a great discussion, but I have to.
Okay, but, okay, Reno have all the, uh, collection books that, the books that we've been buying for the collection, have they remained pretty constant in cost for the last eight years?
I will say that the cost, as I mentioned, my, our annual report is that the trend has been that the cost per book has gone up. The total number of volumes, the titles we've been buying for you has decreased. Uh, based on the data from this last year's report, it was around eight percent less than last year we were able to buy.
Right, but then when we do library IQ and we see what is being checked out and compare that to what the demand is, we're meeting our demand, even though we have less material.
We are able to use the data and buy things that we know people are gonna check out, yes. So we do meet the demand, especially for new items. There are certain areas of collection that have over time gone weaker, especially in the nonfiction, adult nonfiction, just because that collection in particular is more expensive. And so we have to choose where we allocate the funding, because as you all know, it's make sure we're good stewards of the funding we do receive. Uh, and so there are areas of the collection that do have to be prioritized, just like with any budget. But yes, we do, our goal is to make sure that what we do buy is something that's not gonna sit on the shelf. So we're very effective in addition as far as that is concerned.
Right, so the trade-off then, right, because you would get a new contract in June of twenty-six?
W, well, we, we, the, the contract expires in twenty-six. I think it's.
So you wouldn't have a gap in services, so you'd.
Well, no, but, uh, hear me out. In, in past years, it hasn't raised its ugly head much at all in the last, say, three years. But there is a contingent of the popu, local population that doesn't want LSNS in here. Okay, and, yeah, I know, uh, but, um, having a reasonably funded collection budget, um, ha, leads to a, a, a satisfied populace and they're not going to, 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 um, get behind any, any, a, any, uh, any, um,
So I don't.
What's the right word? To, to, a, 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 a plan to, to say, no, no, let's, let's get away from LSNS and go back to what we had. We got the money now.
I guess, but that's already been voted on and established. You wouldn't have to vote again in order to, uh, renew their contract.
I'm, I'm not the city attorney's office.
Yeah, there was, never was a vote. It was, it was a, a, a decision made by the city and approved by council to approve LSNS and it'll be the same thing to renew the contract, I'm sure.
So, so again, I'm, I'm, I'm not a member of the city attorney's office, so I can't speak to what, um, what type of, um, uh, process that we would have to go through to re-initiate the contract. What I can tell you is that the contract expires on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. What would likely occur is sometime in early twenty twenty-six, we would start whatever process the city attorney's office and or our finance department would require of us. So, um, I'll give you a really great example within my department specifically. The contract for our recreation, um, management software ends in September of this year. We just completed a five-year contract. We are now being required to go through an RFP-related process. So, um, we are, uh, that may be something that may be required. However, um, it's also possible that LSNS may be an exclusive provider of library services and there may not be anybody else out there, um, to be able to do that. So those are all things that would be taken into consideration as a part of this particular process when we are moving forward either with a renegotiation or returning it in-house or something along those lines.
Yeah, but as you remember back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen primarily, it was incredibly politicized. And it was, we, there were, there were meetings with people screaming and yelling and it was, it was just really, uh, chaotic. For a process that should not have been. And, um, uh, I think, I know I am and I think most of the board is very pleased with what LSNS is doing and we'd wanna continue that. So let's not tick off our patrons and, and have anything that's going to, uh, create uh, the possibility of, uh, another, uh, circus like we had that.
I just don't think that we're gonna experience that. I mean, we haven't heard from the, the library watchdog group in like three years. So I understand where you're coming from, John. I just don't agree with the timing. I think it's totally doable for the next iteration of the contract with LSNS. But I don't think that not implementing, you know, this increase is going to drive, you know, an uproar to like get LSNS out of here when it's not LSNS's fault that we're not.
Well, I, I know it's not their fault at all, uh, but, uh, it's, uh, they're the ones that could potentially be impacted by it.
Yeah, I, I just don't see, I don't see the concern here. It's not a priority for me as a trustee, but that's just, okay.
I just wanna make a comment. You said, um, we haven't heard from the watchdogs and I just wanted to clarify that we have. I personally get emails from Brenda Thompson, which can lead, and Reno and I handle her individually. So it's not that they're making an uproar, but she is pointing out things that she would like to see improvements on and we've been able to handle it. So they're still very involved. They're just not about, or about anything right now.
Previously, Virginia, every single time we'd hear from them as a group formally, it would be, uh, shared with the other board members.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it would be super helpful because, um, that would.
Yeah, but, uh, I, I used to talk to Brenda, but she won't even acknowledge my presence anymore when I see her on the street.
Yeah, I'll get, like, they, when I get emails to the library board trustees email, I, if they're handled, I don't bring it up, so I apologize for that, um, because Reno's been super responsive and making the updates as requested.
I mean, when I was, when I was president of the board, I did not receive any.
Oh.
I don't think I received any correspondence from, uh, the watchdog group or Brenda.
Okay. And then also, um, I hear both of the sides and I'm just wondering if it would be a good idea to just get, I mean, for one thing, we are, um, under budget, under collections compared to other libraries. That is, there's proof, we have that data. I think that it would be a good idea for us to raise the issue that we are underfunded, so that it is on the city council, city manager, attorney, everyone that's involved, that they know that we're underfunded and we're raising that flag and saying, hey, we're gonna be helped here.
How about, uh, uh, we draft a letter that we could, uh, approve maybe next meeting to send to the city managers, raising the concern and, and saying we'd like this addressed and let him figure out how and, and if. Let him know about the concern.
I think part, part of, um, our, our strategy, maybe on top of that letter, um, a, as Robert noted, you know, there will be that workshop on January twenty-ninth. So I think, um, some of us committed ourselves to being there and raising some of these concerns, right? Again, I don't think this is gonna impact, not between now and June twenty twenty-six because that contract is locked in. Um, but that waits at the council's forefront or start thinking about the future. Because they do start thinking about these things in advance, right? They're not gonna start, oh, it's January, let's start, you know? Um, so I think making us present, um, and then that January twelve meeting, three?
February.
February twelve, um, February twelve. February twelfth.
Workshop, the council digital workshop.
So I think being present in those spaces will help. And I think speaking to that, putting Escanito residents first, right, by limiting hoopla and making all these other cuts where needed, I think is going to speak to, you know, we're not trying to be frivolous with our money, and we're trying to be rescind residents first, I think would help advocate for future funding post-June twenty ninth.
However, right, we do also have a two-point-five million dollar running deficit for the construction project, and I would rather see money spent there than on a collection budget improvement.
Okay, four grand is, a month is...
It's the politics and optics of it. If we come in asking for, you know, four thousand dollars a month instead of or in addition to two-point-five million dollars, I don't think, one, I don't want to distract the council, and then, two, I don't think that it shows that we're prioritizing the right things at this time. That's just me, I mean, and I can abstain from a vote too. If you guys vote to move forward with the request for the four thousand, I think it's totally prudent to like get in front of the council and say that these are the things we're exploring. We know that this is, you know, not meeting demand currently. But my vote would be to focus specifically on the renovation project and the funds we need for that.
Well, how about making sure that the city manager is aware of the issue, it needs to be addressed as soon as possible?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, if you want me to, I'll draft something up and we can talk about it at the next meeting. It's a letter to the city manager.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Then, do one of us want to be present at that January twenty ninth workshop? It's a Wednesday. I don't know, we need to formalize anything.
Well, we just need to make sure that not all of us are there. Or that number.
We can't all be there. Either you're... I like the optics of it, I think, so sure, because you guys are all spread out, you know, there's always that, like, oh, you're all the same. But there's nothing saying you cannot go and...
What time did you say it was for?
Four, and that makes it some initial...
Sounds great.
I could either.
I mean, if we want to show up together.
Well, if Maribel and I are the only ones in the US.
Yep, I can, I can do that, so. I'm just hoping you guys will make it happen.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Um, okay. Number five, statistics report.
All right, so I'll be quick with these, because I know it's going to be a long meeting. All right. I don't have any things in particular to mention in circulation. I will just briefly say that I'm carefully watching the trend of circulation. November and December were a bit lower than last year, and I'm just making sure that it's not going to be a trend. I suspect that the work on Grand Construction has diverted some people away from the area, because it's a minor decrease, and so we haven't changed too much in the program. There's always variances, but because it seems to have been in those months where the construction's really taken off, that seems to be the indicator, at least for me, that could be impacting our circ. We'll be watching it to see if that trend continues or if there's anything else that might be affecting the circulation. And of course, the ebook circulation has been decreasing just because of the fact that we limited hoopla. And that's not a lot, but it is like seven hundred circs a month that we are no longer having. Any other questions regarding the data on the monthly sales?
I have a question. Do we know what the, when we expect the Grand project to be completed? So I'm just thinking about now the renovation, the library renovation, and if we move to Grand, right, parking and just kind of... If we're already seeing a decrease because it's on the other street over, what does that look like coming?
So right now, the project is expected to be completed by May. The downside, I guess, to that is you will be moved out of the library. So, but the good thing is that depending on which location you have chosen, the, if we were to move into the storefront on Grand, it's going to be available, free traffic. It'll be a really nice location. If we were to move into the CCAD's museum space, it's easy to get into a nice big parking lot. So there shouldn't be too many issues there.
Thank you.
If no more questions on this, I can move on to the strategic plan. So we are now, you know, the last few months, strategic plan one, which is community hub cultural sector. This is one of the smaller, shorter strategic plan areas. Essentially, in this area, where the school is all about partnerships, community hub, and embracing diverse cultures, all three are having ongoing programming elements that we plan to continue to have. The one area that I think we still need to work on is strategically targeting more outside partners to come in. Our youth department is very good at getting those partners to come in. For adult services, we have some like our ongoing law library partnership, but I'm looking to have more in the way of technology-centered partnerships and more outreach. We do really great work with our cultural programs for all ages. As you all know, we've had a number of programs from the British Cultural Center. We have our yearly programs around Yelena's Muertos and Halloween and Christmas and the holidays. So that's, I think, a good area, and we're pretty solid there. Same with our outreach events, both our literacy department and children, adults, even our Pioneer Room staff are routinely out and about in the community. Our literacy team, having grown, is right now targeting more community-centered outreach events, partnering with our new programs, so having mini storytimes in, say, laundry mats or areas in the community that are less, I wouldn't say less, less targeted or less attended normally by library services, but that are used as community centers. So laundry mats are great because we have captive audiences, usually families that are going there. And, you know, if you're working mom or dad, you have to bring the kids, so you don't always leave them at home. So we have that option there, so we are exploring that. And also, as we move towards that temporary location, depending on how programming spaces turn out, we might have to be forced to go out more out into the community and find these partnerships. So we are well aware of that, and we're targeting that more as we look forward to the future. Same with our Spanish language, we still don't have enough marketing in Spanish that I would like to see. We are doing better, and the fact that we now have a marketing person that is fluent in Spanish is helping a lot in that regard. And I'll go ahead and add with the recent increases for Spanish collection budgets we've been doing. Let me see if there's anything else here. The website, as you all know, was updated this past year, and so we are still continuously evaluating and updating that. We recently just added a new page called our Library of Things, which is highlighting, currently, there are three kits that are out for circulation, which is our backpacks for adults and kids, and then a recently added stargazing kit with a telescope. So again, trying to leverage the website to make it easier for the patrons to find the information they need. Another recent development was we'll be sharing links to the law library's databases page, so that'll allow an easier access and discovery for legal resources that we don't currently have at the library. And so the library, the Sanyo Law Library has allowed us to link out to them, so that way it's easier for our patrons to find those resources, because not everybody knows that the law library has them available. Any questions or comments about strategic goals or anything?
No, thank you, Reno. Move on to the library director's report.
Okay, I'll be quick. Most things are all good news. I'll mention that our play-for-all grant installation and purchase of all of the items is basically done. These last few weeks, we've been installing, so if we made it to libraries out for, we now have some playlogs installed, the new furniture is there, and we've got a number of new fun things for the kids. Probably this weekend, we just finished up setting up what I call Toys and Manipulatives Tower. It's just full of games and things they can use in the space and just borrow from the back. So that'll include a bunch of new blow blocks, toys that are age-appropriate from ages two to six, and that'll be just for any family and anybody that's in that space to play with. With some efficiencies to our operating budget, we were able to find the method to buy some extra operating equipment. So we noticed, and I noticed in particular, a lot of patrons sitting near outlets to charge their phones when tables were being used that have those charging outlets. So we went ahead and purchased charging lockers for phones and mobile devices. Those will be rolling out probably by the end of the month. Once we make sure we have the procedures in place, we'll say what happens if somebody leaves the phone in there, how do we make sure that it's their phone? But the goal with these lockers is to provide the patrons a safe, secure area for them to charge their devices while they're in the library. A lot of our unhoused patrons don't have anywhere else to charge, so they can come to the library. And sometimes a lot of people just leave the phone while they go around the library. And one, it's against our code of conduct, and two, it's also a potential conflict. If somebody loses their phone, the phone is lost, et cetera, anybody could be in trouble if that happens. So this is a way for us to make sure that we're providing the services that the patrons need in a safe and regulated manner. We also purchased a fun, basically a giant tablet that also works as a little coffee table. And so this is to target our teens and older children. Since we know that we're buying a lot of really great things with a play-for-all grant for the younger kids, we did want to get something to start showing the older kids that we also have them in mind. And then we are experimenting with circulated Kindle paper whites for one of our book clubs. So our second Tuesday Book Club, which is our adult book club. We have bought four paper white tablets and have preloaded them with the titles for the year. This is to allow us to have more flexibility in who can access the books at the book club. Right now, it's going to be limited just to book club members, but depending on how the pilot program goes, we might see a scenario where we expand this type of lending to the general public checking out. But really, this was so that we don't buy ten copies of a book and then after they read it, have it sitting on the shelves. It's a way of being more efficient and effective with the budget that we have. And this came out of operating. Eventually, if we do see that it works well, we incorporate it into our regular collections budget as another collection item. We'll also be buying some incident recording software, which again, isn't the most glamorous, but it is to help with staff and communication with the city to make sure that we are all on the same page as to who is, you know, what kind of incidents have happened in the library, who has been trespass or banned, and so that we can make sure that we have a good record, a consistent record of those incidents, rather than have a scattered approach that has been taking place over the last few years. And of course, we've got three programs. I won't go into all of them, but as always, excellent programs for adult services. Pioneer Room has met up with, I refer to it as the Facebook group, so we're trying to expand access through that very popular and engaged social media presence that highlights Escanito and Escanito history. And last but not least, for youth services, we had many very well-attended events throughout December. And you can see on the left, we experimented with, one of my favorite uses is the green screen, which is green screen photos for those that attended our featuring events. So I was talking about that, that was fun. The Santa is real. The tree and everything else is not. And that's it for my reports.
Any questions on the report? Okay, great, we can move on to the trustee library user report, I thought you wanted to start.
Sure. I attended, and I dragged my cousin along, and she really enjoyed the adult crafty event. And so I thought I would be done really quickly to paint a rock. That was pre-painted, the base already, but it took me most of the time. My little kid loves parents, apparently, he loved the paint when he was, he has a little target mini cart shopping one. He's just pushing it around all over with his pet food.
Yeah, I was able to bring my granddaughters, my wife, I brought the granddaughters to the children's library, and they had a ball, so, yeah. Pardon? No, the new stuff had not been put out yet, so, yeah, we'll be back for that. So they checked out some books, well, I checked out the books. And, yeah, they had a good time.
I just, I think after the last meeting that I was talking about, my hoopla, I just logged in, because I hadn't logged in in a long time, and, yeah, I'm probably one of your blocked reports from last month. But I just kind of like searched the book titles, and there were some there that I was interested in, but they were checked out for the day, or the checked out maximum had been reached. And other than that, I've been too busy to visit in person, but I do plan to go soon.
Okay, great, so a couple of things. A new coworker of mine just moved to Escanito in the start of the new year, and I told her all about the library and how she had to visit. And then the second thing is, speaking of crafts, I had checked out a book at the library related to succulent wreaths, and last weekend I completed mine, so, yeah, the book was very helpful.
Let's walk, we know.
Is there a win? When is it?
The twenty-fifth, I think. Ah, it's on my calendar.
Sergeant, thank you guys for working late. Thanks, everyone.